Members of the public are invited to attend in-person meetings in council chambers. Public access is also available by telephone by using the call-in numbers posted on the meeting agenda, and tonight's meeting will be broadcast on the city's YouTube channel online. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy?
Here.
Mayor Protem Lukman-Hiramasa?
Here.
Councilmember Burns will likely be absent. Councilmember Hadameo?
Here.
Councilmember Condo?
Here.
Councilmember Roper?
Here.
Councilmember Goff?
Here.
Councilmember Nowicki?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. City Manager Guyer, are there any responses to resident inquiry?
One quick item this evening, mayor and council. I am aware, due to outreach by a couple residents of homelessness encampment complaints on the on-ramps, off-ramps, primarily the off-ramps northbound and southbound of I-25 along 120th. So I just want residents to know, as well as all of you, that staff is working on addressing those encampments.
Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Moving on to public invited to be heard, this is an opportunity for public comment on any item not set for public hearing. Statements are limited to five minutes per speaker. Statements must be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest. City Clerk Small, is there anyone signed up to speak to council this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are two individuals signed up. The first one on the list is Tom Lampo.
Welcome. Please state your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council.
All right, thank you. Hello, I'm Tom Lampo, 3951 Jackson Way. It's good to be here in front of North Glenn, here in front of you guys. I'm here to invite God to be with us and to pray for the people of North Glenn. So please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we invite you here to this council meeting and to the city of North Glenn. We need your presence to influence and guide our daily lives. You are always welcome wherever we go. You are the creator of all things, and your love for us is evident in what you have given us to help us live our lives. John 14:16 states, "And I will ask the Father, and he will give you another advocate to help you and be with you forever." You understood this life would be difficult and we'd need assistance, so you gave us the Holy Spirit to be with us. Help us to embrace the Holy Spirit in our lives. Father, help us to show love to one another. We can find ourselves judging those around us rather than showing love to them. You showed us the ultimate love by sending your Son to die for us. You tell us what love looks like in 1 Corinthians 13:4-7, where it states, "Love is patient; love is kind; it does not envy; it does not boast; it is not proud; it does not dishonor others; it is not self-seeking; it is not easily angered; it keeps no record of wrongs. Love does not delight in evil but rejoices with the truth; it always protects, always trusts, always hopes, always preserves." Help us to live our lives to intentionally and purposely show your perfect love to those around us. Lord, your grace has saved us. We constantly make decisions which pull us away from you. We are limited to the moment and can only guess what our outcome, the outcome of our decisions will be. You see what is happening now and how each interaction will play out because you see the future. You never ask for us to be perfect. In Micah 6:8, you state what you want from us. No, oh people, the Lord has told you what is good, and this is what he requires of you, to do what is right, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God. Help us to get this right. We can do better for ourselves and for those around us if we would walk humbly with you, if we would love mercy for others as much as we love it for ourselves, and to do what is right in all situations. You are our God and we are your people. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys. Have a nice night.
Thank you so much.
The next person on the list is Melissa Ryan.
Good evening. Please state your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council.
All right, Melissa Ryan, and I award three. I just wanted to come here today to say a thank you to Condo and Walker here, because a few weeks back I came in about some parking issues along our street. And also, you guys took immediate action, and it has helped so greatly. I could drive, leave my driveway every day. It's been amazing, with no issues. And I've actually had people that are very familiar with the area that live along the way that have even thanked me because Animal Control went through, all the way down through Pearl. So there's been quite a bit of positive feedback in regards to the parking situation over there now. So I wanted to say that. And then Condo, I actually spoke to him over the weekend. He stopped by. I introduced him to some of my fellow neighbors that I know are heavily involved in the community and also care. And we were talking about a few things. One of the ladies even said, like, some of the extended parking areas that they get blocked in their driveway because of the way people parked, but because there is no stripping along the sidewalks, that, I guess technically they're not breaking any laws, so she could just get blocked at her driveway in certain spots, which I think each of the end units probably have that same kind of issue. So that's just something else to keep in mind, but overall, it was really positive feedback in the area. And the other thing I wanted to come speak about, about a year ago, you guys installed a new fence along EB Rains near the skate park on the east side? Sorry, I forgot that on the wrong, is it east? I don't know. I think it's east side. No, it's west. Okay, anyways. But I wanted to give a little bit of feedback to you guys about that fencing, because I understand it was very expensive. In the future, you guys sent one survey to the 16 of us that live along there. I understand there was, like, different opinions of what should be done in regards to the fence, but as expensive as it is, it honestly, it's not any better than the chain link fence you guys had. You guys installed gates in between, so now people just go in and out of the alley through the gates anyways. They don't just have the separate entrances, but additionally, it's only vertical. It doesn't go vertical diagonal like a chain link fence, so we get a lot of the debris and garbage from EB Rains that doesn't get picked up through the skate park, and it lands in our alley. And the alley is our property line, and you guys do send code enforcement through frequently, and they threaten to ticket us and things like that. So it's just something to keep in mind if you guys are thinking about that in the future for other locations, especially if it's a heavy traffic area like EB Rains. Just maybe get a little more feedback about exactly what you guys envision you think this will do, because I kind of honestly see it as a waste of the budget at this point, because it's not really doing anything effective. So just in case you guys were thinking about other projects like that in the future, maybe send one of you guys out door-to-door and ask residents, like, what do you really think about this? Because I was one of the stubborn people in the neighborhood that wouldn't sign the agreement that your attorney was sending over. And I know there was four other homeowners that felt the same way. I think a lot of the feedback you got that was kind of positive and going towards it were from people who owned but rented out. So they are affected by the daily lifestyle back there anyways. So just kind of food for thought for you guys. So thank you again. I appreciated the immediate response to our issues over there, so have a good evening.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have a chance to sign up that would like to speak to council? If so, please come forward. State your name and address or ward and provide your comments to council.
My name is Jordan Stransky, and I'm at 2089 East 114th Avenue, North Glenn, Colorado. So I'm here tonight because a couple weeks ago, I've been battling, I was ticketed for a cat at large, and these were just two feral kittens that were in the neighborhood that my daughter was able to sort of tame and befriend, and we were able to kind of get them to be friendly enough where we feed them, we water them, I took it upon myself to get them spayed and neutered. And by doing so, in court a couple weeks ago, they were able to basically pin these cats on me as being the owner. I was fined almost $900 for two cats, one of which that I do not have. And basically, at the end of the trial, they just told me, "Sounds to me..." They were able to prove that the cat was friendly enough that he should have been, he's adoptable. And I could tell you right now, he's not the friendliest cat. He does not, he's not domesticated. He does not want to be an indoor cat. And at the end of the trial, basically, I was told, "Sounds to me like you should take the cat to the Riverdale Animal Shelter, since he's friendly." So I don't know if you knew, but the Riverdale Animal Shelter was on the news the other night for being overpopulated, like, they have so many animals. So I'm concerned. I feel like it was more about making the point. They were unhappy with me because the only plea they wanted to give me was plead guilty for a cat at large and no more animal violations for a year. Well, by doing so, I'm now taking ownership of this cat, and I'm going to be back here within a year because I'm going to keep getting animal violations, because he's an outdoor neighborhood cat. So I'm just here to express my frustrations again. My daughter goes to school in the neighborhood. She's in third grade. When I was in second grade in this neighborhood, I was able to walk to and from school, and I live in a neighborhood where I don't even feel like my daughter is safe enough to walk to school. So we need to really reevaluate how we're spending our resources and these minor infractions, like, we need to be worried about safety. We need to be worried about the homeless population. I live on a bike path where there's constantly shopping carts there and homeless people, and I'm being fined for a cat at large, almost $900. I've lived in North Glenn my entire life. I am a single mother. I work two jobs. I have kids in Adams 12. I've worked in Adams 12 for almost 20 years, and I'm asking that the city looks into this. This is, I seem very unfair, very unjust, and I'm getting ready to file an appeal with the Adams County Courts, just because it was the prosecutor and the judge. And when I took it to trial, I didn't know much about the municipality side of things. I thought I was going to be in front of people that would hear my case and maybe see some reason that I don't, I'm allergic to cats. I don't want a cat. These were not my cats. My daughter has a bleeding heart. She loves cats. I did not want to teach her, sorry, Ella, these cats, these kittens that you see out there, you need to leave them. Like, let's let them just keep overpopulating and just have cats everywhere. I just was trying to teach her to be, yeah, let's do our part, let's feed the cats, let's get them spayed and neutered. I got it done at a low-income type of place. But again, just trying to teach my daughter to be a good community care member as well. And based on the definition on the city of North Glenn, there's a community cat caregiver, and there's community cats, and there is no reason, I can't fall under that community cat caregiver, and no reason that this cat that my daughter named, which is another thing they used against me, but she's named all the cats on the neighborhood, on the street, but he's a community cat. So I'm asking, this is the second time I've come in here to speak about this, and nothing, there was no conversations, no follow-up, but again, I'm just really disappointed, living here my whole life. I feel like I'm being singled out and targeted. I've had to call Animal Control before for vicious animals, vicious dogs, never came. Like, four of us on the block had had to call a couple times. But Jordan Stransky's black cat, they're out there. And one other piece to note, the cops came to my house at 11:30 at night on a Wednesday to issue me these tickets for a cat at large. So really must not have been a high-crime night, but I can tell you that they scared my children. The way they were banging on my door, they scared me for a cat at large. Please look into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who did not have a chance to sign up that would like to speak to council? Okay. Is there anyone on the phone that would like to speak to council? You can press *6 to unmute at this time. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move to proclamations. We have two tonight. Okay, our first one tonight, I would like to welcome up our Crisis Response Unit. Do we have team members? Oh, everyone, come on down. Okay, before we begin, I'm going to have everyone introduce themselves, name, position, role, anything else you want to say.
Thank you. My name is Jessica Hulse. I manage our Crisis Response Unit.
My name is Tristan Reyes. I'm one of the coresponders.
I'm Jamie Slottowitz. I'm one of the coresponders.
Hey there. I'm Nicole Mares, one of our coresponders.
Lacey Awol, also a coresponder.
Well, thank you for joining us. They are here to receive this proclamation. Coresponder Team and Crisis Clinician Week. Whereas, the city of North Glenn is committed to supporting residents who are facing behavioral health issues in our community. And whereas, behavioral health describes the emotions and behaviors that affect an individual's overall well-being, including mental health disorders and substance use. And the National Institute of Mental Health estimates that more than one in five U.S. adults live with a mental illness. And whereas, mental health and substance use challenges can lead to emergency room visits, homelessness, and incarceration, which are more intrusive and costly for communities than earlier interventions and connections to behavioral health services. And whereas, many communities, including North Glenn, have recognized the importance of additional strategies to respond effectively to individuals in crisis. And whereas, coresponders partner with law enforcement to de-escalate crisis situations and connect individuals to critical resources, including counseling, medical care, treatment, housing, and other necessities. And whereas, the city of North Glenn's Crisis Response Unit, CREW, provides direct on-scene crisis response, case management, and continued support to residents, easing hardships and creating a path for self-advocacy and long-term stability. And whereas, the CREW team has shown exceptional commitment and dedication by responding to calls for service, ensuring individuals have access to needed care and resources, and strengthening community well-being and safety by addressing behavioral health crises with compassion and expertise. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glenn, Colorado, do hereby proclaim September 14th through the 20th, 2025, as Coresponder Team and Crisis Clinicians Week in the city of North Glenn, and encourage all residents to support the vital work of our Crisis Response Unit and the behavioral health partners who make our community stronger, dated at North Glenn, Colorado, this 8th day of September, 2025. So I will hand the microphone back if you would like to add anything about your program.
I just want to say thank you to North Glenn. It's been an honor to build this program. Thank you so much to our police department, our city, and our council for embracing the work that we do. We are honored to show up and do it every day. Does anyone else have anything else to say? Thank you.
Didn't make that noise when they moved it the last time.
All right, our second one tonight is Hispanic Heritage Month, and we have a member of our DICE board that's going to accept this proclamation. Come on up. Diversity, Inclusivity, and Social Equity Board. This is Ann Navarez. Come on up. Whereas, the United States Congress has designated September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month, and the city of North Glenn joins in this tribute and celebration by acknowledging the many contributions that members of our society with Latin American and Caribbean heritage have made to this nation. And whereas, the objectives of Hispanic Heritage Month are to create a greater awareness of the role Hispanic people have played in shaping America's identity, illustrate the diversity of the Hispanic-American community, and encourage a greater curiosity within young people about the rich history and cultural heritage of Hispanic Americans. And whereas, throughout history, Hispanic leaders have paved the way for social change, cultural enrichment, and progress in education, politics, arts, and activism. And whereas, the 2025 national theme for Hispanic Heritage Month, Collective Heritage, honoring the past, inspiring the future, emphasizes the cultural traditions that define Hispanic identity and looks forward to the creativity and potential of upcoming generations. And whereas, locally and nationally, countless Hispanic educators, entrepreneurs, and community organizers continue to inspire new generations to lead with pride and purpose, while highlighting the pivotal role Hispanic individuals and communities have played in pioneering change, breaking barriers, and fostering innovation that continues to shape a more inclusive and just future for all. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glenn, Colorado, hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of North Glenn. I encourage all residents to learn more about the various Hispanic cultures, traditions, and values that enrich our community, and join together to build a future where the voices of Hispanic and Latino Americans are always recognized and valued, dated at North Glenn, Colorado, this 8th day of September, 2025. So Ann, would you like to add anything?
Unbehave the DICE board. I'd like to thank you all for recognizing and celebrating our Hispanic community.
Thank you. I'll take a photo. You get that? Oh, I get this. Up next is a presentation, the Proposed 2026 Annual Operating and Capital Improvement Budget. Deputy City Manager Jason Loveland will present the proposed budget to council. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. So I won't repeat the title of what you just mentioned, but that's what we're going to talk about tonight, the 2026 proposed budget. Couple of topics that we'll cover at really high level. This is kind of follow-up to meetings that we had August 4th and August 18th. Identify a couple other bits of information, but really, this is kind of a recap, just kind of the more official presentation of the proposed budget. So we'll talk about some key revenues and key expenditures, move forward through a whole lot of numbers. So not going to read all the numbers to everybody. Please stop me if you have any questions as I'm going through the presentation. So this first, first slide here, fund summaries, this is really just outlining each of the individual funds that we have, and the total expenditures, because that is what council authorizes. Council isn't authorizing their forecast of how much revenue, but allowing the expenditures to take place within each fund. So you can see there, total at the bottom for 2026 being proposed is almost $106 million. A lot of that's driven in various funds by capital projects and what have you. The general fund, that total expenditure is at 39.9, and that's something that we brought forward, again, like I mentioned, in August. Nothing has changed there. We have a whole lot of different breakdowns of the general fund. This first really identifies kind of the major categories for revenues and expenditures, and scrolling across the screen, what the actual amounts in each category were in 2024 as audited, the 2025 budget, and then you can see the 2025 forecast. Of note on this page, the total revenue forecast is down about 2% from what we had projected for the budget at the start of the year. And then you'll see the 2026 proposed budget, again, the 39.9 million in total revenues, going down the page on the expenditure side of things. You can see those various categories. You will see, you know, no changes in things like personnel, or very modest, small changes in most of the categories that we've talked about the last couple meetings on this budget topic, as far as very minimal increases for certain required package requests totaling $800,000 of new spending for the year, and then some other decreases in areas as well, you'll notice. So a balance budget, you'll see the net change in fund balance at zero, which is identified by the little dash there. And then an ending fund balance at the end of 2026 of 14 and a half million dollars. The forecast in the column to the left of the one that's outlined, we're expecting a potential decrease in fund balance of about $3.8 million. A large part of that is due to a decrease in the revenue that we're seeing right now of about $2.2 million. So we'll see a little bit of a decrease there. And we're also on the expenditure forecast, just making the assumption that we do indeed spend every dollar that was budgeted for. We did have that very closely happen in 2024, so we're erring on the side of caution as far as the expenditures and what we expect to see. Here's another look at the general fund. We've talked about this August 4th. This is the five-year kind of outlook and projection. The highlighted column on the left is the proposed budget that we just talked about. You can see various forecasts as we move out into the out-years of really that very bottom line of fund balance and then the percentage of fund balance that we're going to have going down the line. Again, this is inclusive of the notes on the left-hand side of the additional of the additional $3.5 million from the half percent sales tax, moving from the water fund to the general fund, and then some other assumptions being made as far as personnel growth, benefits, wages, and things like that into those out-years, starting in 2027 and moving forward. Any questions on the general fund? And we can also, we can circle back too. This is just an illustration of the previous page as far as the fund balance with the minimum requirement that we have, and then a dollar amount that would be available for one-time expenditures. So you can see that at $4.5 million in 2026, and then as we go into out-years, getting down to one and a half to even below $1 million. So moving into the Conservation Trust Funds, revenue source, intergovernmental revenues supported by lottery proceeds, forecasting that at about $402,000. The other revenue is really investment earnings. So you can see kind of the actual happening in 2024 in the 25 budget forecast and proposal in 2026. These funds are restricted for parks and recreation-type activities and are typically limited to one-time use for projects. Capital Projects Fund. You'll see the total revenues of $13.7 million forecast for 2026, expenditures of $19.8 million. Again, one-time projects. We have the entire list coming up in a few slides of what those projects look like. You will see a decrease in the revenue line on the taxes. We're just projecting at this time, sales and use tax to be down 2%, and then being conservative into 2026 and making the assumption that there will be no growth in sales tax. Continue to monitor that on a monthly basis, and we'll make adjustments to that as we see anything that changes those forecasted amounts. Here in the Water Fund, a total $12.5 million of revenue. The majority of that, $9.7 million, being made up of user charges and fees. Again, the fees are in place to support the use and the usage of the residents. You will see a drop in the taxes line item, down to $1.6 million. That is the $3.5 million that was going to this fund, now going to the general fund. So you see that decrease. On the expenditure side, minimal changes year over year, but the total of $23.8 million in that fund. In the wastewater fund, you'll see a large revenue number of total revenue of $36 million. That's based off of the assumption that we're going to need to issue revenue bonds for a large capital project that we'll talk about when we get to that point of about $23 million. We'll probably do that in the fall or winter of 2026, depending on kind of how the project proceeds and where we get as far as navigating the design and whatnot. Also, a transfer from the Water Fund of $5.7 million is included. That is part of the food tax that's restricted to water wastewater projects. So we feel that we can make a one-time transfer to help ease that debt service need that we're going to need to help reduce the project. More to come on that. We're going to navigate that throughout the process, but at this time, that's what we're expecting to need to do to make kind of these large projects fundable as we move forward. So those are two unique things to this slide and new to, as you can see, in 2026, something that we don't do on a regular basis. Expenditures in the fund of $16.2 million. The debt that we'll issue, the project will be a multi-year project, so we'll recognize the revenue in the year that that's issued, and then the project expenses will come in over a few-year period. So you don't see that necessarily $23 million incoming and $23 million outgoing in a single year. We'll see that over the long term. In the stormwater funds, total revenues of $519,000, expenditures of just under $1.4. No expected changes to stormwater fees, no plan changes have been discussed the last couple of months. Minimal changes really to any expenditure in that fund. And then on the sanitation fund, we have talked about rate increase, and we'll talk about that more later agenda item. That's not included here. This is just flat base amount of sanitation fees, the $16 a month for residential units. So total revenue of $2.1 million and expenditures of $2.9. Minimal changes on the personnel side. Capital outlay, that's really just the replacement of vehicles if we're doing one or two or more. And that's accommodating the purchase of two vehicles, that $1 million, and some other smaller equipment. That's a quick overview of things that we've already talked about of just all of the funds. Any questions on those? I'm going to dive into more revenue and expense detail as we go through, but if there's anything specific on a fund, I'm happy to.
Absolutely. Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wonder if we could just go back to slide 14 real quick here. So obviously, you're mentioning that taxes in '26 are, those proceeds are lower because of now the sales tax extension is going to go to general fund. So I would assume that over time, with lower cash flows coming into the water fund, there will need to be some inter-fund transfer to help top it off or cover the amount of expenses since there's less cash coming in. I wonder if you can talk a little bit about how that will work?
So in one of the slides, we don't have the five-year forecast for tonight.
Yes.
But I think that we do actually have this fund covered and are not seeking additional transfers into the water fund or necessarily anything unique besides what we see right now as far as user charges and fees covering. And then that taxes line item, that's going to, that $1.6 million is representative of the food sales tax that comes in on an annual basis. That also goes on in perpetuity, so we don't expect any changes there. So I feel like we do have an opportunity, if you can see in like the 2025 forecast, and other future revenues that we will be able to cover that.
Okay, gotcha. And we can put that on parking lot. I just, you know, when we eventually get to the future forecasting, it just kind of is a, it stood out for me, and I wanted to kind of make sure that that was identified. And then on slide 15, when you talk about the wastewater capital outlay capex. So that's a pretty big bump up now, $9.7 million. Is that the beginning of the so-called $30 million upgrade multi-year?
Yes.
Refurb program that's going to be starting?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Not all of it, but a portion of the design work. In total, we'll get there. It's a $56 million project that we're expecting to have a couple of different debt issuances on, one in 2026, and I believe again in 2029 to fund the upgrades required at the wastewater plant.
Okay, gotcha. And hopefully, at some point, we'll start to get into the discussion about the bond process and how we're going to raise that money.
Certainly we will, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. So this is kind of our big key revenue categories. You can just see, it's just depicting '24 actual through '26 proposed. Now you can see the slight decrease in taxes. And that's all taxes, property tax and sales and use tax, user charges and fees, and so on and so forth. So really, just depicting the fact that we don't really have foreseeable revenue growth in really any categories. User charges and fees, and we'll touch on that here shortly. Biggest key revenues, I already mentioned this, sales and use tax growth, or non-growth is what we're seeing right now through 2025. And then, good news on the property tax front. Property tax, we were expecting to be flat. It actually has increased for next year by 13.9%. As you can see there, Adams County went up 3.3%. And then Weld County, not a typo, over 6,000%. That's due to oil and gas extraction. And so our preliminary assessed valuation was at $58 million, which is up from $800,000 this year. So we see a big increase there. Again, my last bullet point there, not currently reflected in the general fund or capital projects fund, but about $480,000 to the general fund and a little over $200,000 to the capital projects fund, with our mill-levy split of the 7.597 going to the general fund, and then four mills going to the capital projects fund. So that's a good highlight on the revenue front. Again, not included in the numbers that we're presenting tonight. We got the later than we could incorporate these revenues, but we will have that updated in the presentation for September 22nd. Also got opposite great news on the statewide severance tax on intergovernmental front today, as far as the shareback of the very similar tax. It is the same tax from the statewide pool that comes to the city. That's something that is being held back to balance the state's budget, I believe. So it's something where we previously had collected about $120,000, and I think this year we're going to be at about $22,000. So you gain four, you lose one. We're going to hold tight and see where things go over the next couple of weeks and try to be as flexible with kind of that revenue forecast as we can be. Sales tax, similarly, I'm going to talk about that in the next presentation for the July forecast. Sales tax was down about 2%. We had a positive June, which changed that to being down about 1.2%, which is fantastic. I'm going to report on that shortly. But a new update as of today, we did not have a good July, and we're back down to being down about 1.5%. So more fluctuating this year than we've seen for quite a while. So we're trying to manage that the best that we can and try not to fall too far behind with being conservative, but also try not to get too far ahead of ourselves, knowing that it's changing a fair amount each month. So more to come on revenue forecasts. Visual of sales tax since 2021. Other key revenues we are considering, and this is included in the budget. We had the last five years of a 10-year rate increase. Again, trying to manage smaller rate increases on a regular basis rather than hitting folks with double-digit increases at any one point in time. So included in the budget, water rate increase of 2%. You can see that average bill, 75 cents to $2 a month. That's recognizing summer versus winter. So small amounts in summer, or in winter, 75 cents, vice versa. And wastewater increase of 5.25, and that is on a regular average customer all year round of just over $1.50. Breakdown of people like numbers and graphs on the same slide. This is depicting where we're at over the last few years and projected for the next year. Personnel category, just a perspective on what we pay for wages versus benefits, retirement contributions, and so on. And you can see no change on the regular wages. Maybe a little bit of a decrease in medical benefits. Those did go up with our renewal about 2.5%. Those are always fluctuating depending on annually who's on staff and what elections they make each year. Again, on the personnel side, nothing being included, still being considered. We talked about in previous meetings, coming back in October when we get a little bit more revenue data to see if that is able to be done. And also, again, in January, for some reason, we don't have a positive data. So still more to come on those. Again, some positive direction with the property tax piece, and we'll continue to keep track of that. And then here's a slide, what kind of we're doing as far as pausing, because we do have a lot of dynamic things happening with revenue in the universe right now. So here's the current list of holds on hiring that we have. A couple of those have already been included, and some of these are new to the conversation. So you can see the list there of where we're looking at some savings. Staffing levels, again, no new positions proposed for the next year. Next big expenditure category is capital projects. You can see the majority of the breakout going to the capital projects fund. So that's detailed here in the next few slides for 2026. Here's the list of projects that I certainly will not read. Please pause me if there's any questions as I kind of scroll through. So this is in the Conservation Trust Fund. Here's where you can see the capital projects fund. You'll see the top one, Odell Berry Park, that 1.7. We know that the cost of the project is more. That's just what we have projected for 2026. There's other grant dollars and things that are coming for that. This is just what we have fully secured at this time. You can see other playgrounds and parks and whatnot throughout the city that have work to be done throughout 2026. And then this slide, also capital projects fund. This is more of the public work side of things. You can see the investment in residential streets, additional funding for kind of a variety of not as fun and sexy things as the parks and whatnot, but very necessary investment in infrastructure that we commit to every year. And then here in the water funds, a couple of big projects, the Aquifer Storage and Recovery. We've done a pilot project on that, and this is the next phase to do a second one. And then water lines out at Section 36. We know that we finally have water out there, and then we just need to run the lines from kind of the stopping point of where the water comes and run it to our plant. So of the, in the wastewater funds, Councilmember Condo mentioned the $9 million. That $5.6 million is the primary clarifiers and digesters project. So that $5.6 is really the design of that $56 million project. So we'll see that in 2026. So we'll see that in 2026. Maybe not till late in the year, we may not actually spend 5.6, but we have it in the budget, just in case. Couple of projects in the stormwater funds. These are shared projects with a mile-high flood district, or the top one is, and then other drainage improvements throughout the city. All right, long-term obligations, we've got three right now, civic campus COPs, Justice Center, and then wastewater revenue bonds for the lift station A enforcement project. This is just breaking down the totals of what will, the balances will be at the start of 2026, and then what the annual payments are for each of those. So that was all for the presentation for the proposed budget. Again, it's kind of a recap of what you heard on August 4th and August 18th. I think with the biggest change still to come with making modifications to the revenue forecast as we get a little bit more information. And then open here any additional council feedback on what was presented, or if there's other information that you would like to be brought forward for September 22nd, or whatever you would like.
Okay. Let's start with Councilmember Herramio.
Thank you, Mayor Leidy, and thank you Director Loveland. Question I have is on page 19, where you mentioned the 6,659% increase on oil and gas production in section 36 in Weld County. I was wondering, what is the dollar amount for that tax revenue?
Yeah, so it's going to be a little bit over $600,000 in total. About 480,000 going to the general fund, and then 220-ish going to the capital projects fund.
220,000 into, you said, capital?
Capital projects fund, yeah.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So my goodness, the last few meetings I've had, you know, it's all doom and gloom with the state and money and whatnot. But this reminded me of that executive order that Polis passed, and you might not know the answer. I did pose the question, we might not have the information yet, but it does potentially affect our budget, which is the crackdown on those, what he calls the strategic growth bills, which are related to housing. And I know that CDBG fund is definitely one that's on there, as well as some other funds that we potentially get money from the state. Do we know? I'm not even sure like where that is right now, and I think it's by October, I want to say it's October 6th is when that information will be going out to municipalities that are deemed in non-compliance, and what funding that could affect. Are you aware of that? It's okay if it's not an answer for today.
Aware without an answer. I'm aware, but without an answer.
Okay.
Yeah.
I need to spend some time, Mayor Protem, diving into it, but we're kind of at a standstill because we're waiting for additional information. So as soon as we can get that information, we'll provide it to council, but it would be purely speculation at this point about what the impact would be, so.
Okay. I just wanted to kind of keep that top of mind, just because I know it could affect some of our funding, and I mean, obviously, we have people fighting it like CML, but could affect our budget, so just would love that information. And then, let me see, I had a couple of other questions here. On slide 32 for the ASR project, that is such an amazing project, the $3,500,000. I know, are we at the end stage of that pilot program? And what, I can't remember exactly like how that was allotted, like what does that 3.5 million cover for that project? Just even for public information?
I will bring Public Works Director Borgers up to more eloquently speak to that, of course.
It's an awesome project, right?
It is. It's amazing, yeah.
So phase one is complete. Phase one was essentially us digging the hole in the ground, so there's the drilling piece of it, and then we did some testing around that hole. Phase two is what's coming up next, which is what the 3.5 million you saw is to get through the phase two, which is actually outfitting it, putting like a building and equipment on the site. So the stuff that you'll actually see will go up in phase two. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. I just, I couldn't remember exactly like what that second phase looked like, and it's a big part of our budget, but such an important project, so thank you for spearheading that. And then I'm sure I had another question, I can't remember what it is, so when I find it, maybe I'll raise my hand again. Thank you.
Well, I think our time's up. I don't see any more hands.
Excellent. We'll talk about it at the public hearing on September 22nd.
Great.
And hopefully have more data to support the forecast, so.
Okay, thank you. Well, don't go anywhere, because you're here for the financial report, July 2025 update.
I am here for that, yes.
You are here for that. No slides for that, apparently.
There are no slides for this presentation, so. And I'll probably say the wrong year a few times, so bear with me, since we're talking about a bunch of different years. So, next on the agenda, July financials. Start with a quick sales and use tax. I think I'll make this one pretty quick, just because it's a lot of numbers to go with the budget, the proposed budget. So as I mentioned, sales and use tax through July was down 1.2%. Now preliminary numbers through August, down more than that, down to about 1.5%. But through July, auto use tax was continuing to lag behind, down 4.6%. Sales tax hovering around, down 1%, and then food tax being up 7%. And then again, the marijuana tax down about 2%. So trends continuing. Like I said, in July, we had a little bit of bump in the positive on the sales tax side, which came back down unfortunately in the following month. I think, just at a very high level, the general fund, on page two, the revenue outline that I have here, general fund revenue is down about 2.4% in the general fund, the majority of that being in a use tax category, so we're just not seeing as much building and construction as we had been seeing. You'll also see that being down in licenses and permits side of the revenue, down 33%. Again, building permits, electrical permits, right-of-ways, things like that, we're seeing a pretty big decline there. On the positive, fines and forfeitures are up about 28%, so that's a positive thing on the general fund revenue. Flipping to page three, and the expenditures within the general fund, which is broken down by department. You can see some swings, but total expenditures of $22.8 million through July, and that's up 6.7%. Again, in line with the budget and what we had estimated for the year in 2025. Moving ahead to page four, the water funds, total revenues of 7.5 million and expenditures of just over five. The highlight here is consumption through July was down 8%. We had actually been trending the opposite direction, so through July, there was significant savings in consumption versus the prior year. But overall, revenues expenditures in line with the budget. On the wastewater fund, total revenues of $3.6 million and expenditures of 2.1. Again, nothing of note on that fund. The next page, page six, the stormwater funds, total revenues of $270,000 and expenditures of 352,000. Nothing of note there, pretty stable fund on an ongoing basis. And then last fund to note, the sanitation funds, total revenues of 1.1 million, expenditures of 1.3. You'll see, again, we're still awaiting some sanitation vehicles in that expenditure line. We've only spent about $200,000 this year and have budgeted 1.3 million, so we just have a few more months to go until we need, hopefully we'll take ownership, take possession of a couple of sanitation vehicles. But otherwise, revenues expenditures are in line. Flipping the page into a little bit more of the sales tax information, page nine has a chart showing the marketplace sales tax history from 2021 through 2025. So this is through June. You can see, that's kind of the light pink line. You can see at the marketplace, the majority of the time, I think every single month, January through June, is down as compared to the prior year. Page 10, just kind of overall sales tax history for the city, again, from 2021 through 2025. We do see some increases on a month-to-month basis, February, March, May, and June, so that's positive overall. Flipping the page to page 11, so this is the tax collected by geographic code or geographic area. That percentage change column, we try to keep track of and monitor pretty closely, so this is a percent change from 24 to 25. You can see that first line, the out-of-state, so that's really kind of our online sales that we've been discussing, up over 15%. That's fantastic. That's helping keep our sales tax kind of steady. Not a lot of people going out to shop, but a lot of people ordering into the city, so money's being spent, it's just not necessarily being spent, one, at the predicted rate that it has historically been, and then, two, not necessarily going out to the different shopping areas. As you can see, there's a lot of negative numbers on that chart. So kind of our brick-and-mortar locations within the city, if you take out the out-of-state piece or online sales, we're down about 6.5% year-over-year. But then you can see in total, we're down just under 2%. So interesting dynamics as the world evolves and shopping changes, habits change and whatnot. But that's a little bit of an indication of what's going on, you know, at the stores that we go to, there, not all, but some are feeling kind of a negative impact through With that, I'll take any question.
Councilmember Condos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wonder if we could go back to the general fund expenditures. I'm just curious, human resources, it looks like their percentage spend of 70.3% is kind of higher than what I would have anticipated for this time of year. I wonder if you can just kind of characterize what might be some expenses, I don't know, maybe it's insurance or what have you that's causing that to, am I on the, okay?
Precisely, that is our insurance premium. We pay that at the start of the year to end up getting a discount, and so we don't spread that evenly throughout the year. It gets paid out from the HR department through risk management, which falls under that category, so we do see an accelerated spend in their budget.
Okay, gotcha. And then, I know we are on this topic, but I was kind of curious if you have it in your head, how much our healthcare premium's increasing? Do you have a number?
2.5%. 2.5%?
2.5%?
Yes.
In premiums for healthcare?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And our renewal period is August through July, so that has already come up.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. I was expecting something like in the middle, single digits, but that's kind of good news to a certain extent. My last question goes back to, I think, slide 11, where you have Washington East. Obviously, that one is very welcome news, that they're in the black in terms of change. And I'm wondering, is that an artifact possibly? You got Walgreens tires plus Sonic Pizza Hut, is that also an artifact of having Murphy's there as well? Is that a, would you consider that a gas station bump?
Yeah, I think that, and some of these are so sliced, so small, that yes, single new businesses definitely have an impact in different locations. And that would be true for Eastlake with the development of...
Yep, with the QuickTrip there.
Yeah, QuickTrip, Raising Canes, Dutch Bros.
I am surprised that the marketplace annex with Mickey D's, car toys, and Taco Bell is actually up. I was just, when you hear about all the people running away from fast food, the fact that fast food is up, it's very interesting. All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Walker, communications.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Tom Lampeau and his wonderful words, Ms. Melissa Ryan, and Ms. Jordan for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Herramio.
Thank you, Mayor Leidy. On August 28th, I attended the North Area Transportation Alliance meeting, and we're going to have a follow-up meeting for the second segment of I-25, which is essentially a stretch of I-25 that divides North Glenn, so that will be happening October 22nd, so I'll be attending that meeting. And let's see, I also wanted to thank the city of North Glenn for the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. There's one part that really resonated with me that I feel like just really spoke to me, it said, "Throughout history, Hispanic leaders have paved the way for social change, cultural enrichment, and progress in education, politics, art, and activism." So I was like, wow, that really spoke to me, so thank you for that. With that said, too, I'd like to invite the public to the Third Annual Festival Latino. It's happening September 14th. It's happening from 12 o'clock noon to 7:00 PM at the regional Riverdale Regional Park, which we also know as Adams County Fairgrounds, if you're from here for a while. So I'm happy that I was on the inaugural event a few years ago, along with our Mayor Protem, Shannon Leibman here in Omasa. So it's going on strong on our third annual, so hope you can all attend and, you know, just celebrate culture with us in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nowicki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So last week, I had the opportunity to attend the Third Annual Health Forum put on by the Adams County Health Department. There, we heard from, it was a good gathering of folks, and we heard from AG Phil Weiser, Donette Smith, who is the BHA Commissioner, and then Adam Fox, who is the Deputy Director of the Colorado Consumer Health Initiative, talked about Medicaid and those different things. So overall, it was a good forum, again, put on by the Health Department to talk about some of the concerns on their radar and things like that, and that is all for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Goff.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to sort of echo everything that was said on the proclamation and thank our crisis response unit, in particular Jessica Hulse, who I remember we hired as a part-time person way back when, and she's grown that program into something that people from all over the state, if not the country, are wanting to emulate and talk to her about. And so I just want to thank the staff, and the Police Department, too, that work with the crisis response unit. I think North Glenn can be really proud of that program. And then I also wanted to say, on August 26th, the diceboard met, and we did have a presentation and a debrief, I guess, on the Juneteenth event, and it was considered by several measures to be very successful. We had a lot of positive media coverage and a strong partnership with King Supers. It has also been determined that 2026 will, the Juneteenth will be a standalone event. In the past, it's kind of been tied to Neighborhood Nights concert kind of thing, or, yeah, the summer concert series. So it'll be its own event, and I also very much wanted to thank Patrick Berger and all the staff who plan and worked on the Juneteenth event. I think it was a great event, in large part due to their efforts. And the diceboard is also continuing its plan for next year, and one of the things that we are adding to our plan is a Lunar New Year celebration, and that would be in February, so, you know, we're kind of trying to move quickly to get that organized. Also then, on August 27th, I went to the meet and greet for our new... Also, then, on August 27th, I went to the meet and greet for our new Deputy Chief Rice. And I just want to say that, in case people aren't aware, that he has been 24 years with the North Glenn Police Department, and he did, he was a picture of grace under pressure because he had some very tough questions from the audience, people in the audience, and he did a great job. And I know he's going to continue doing a great job, so kudos to him. And I think that's it for me. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Cog last week had its annual awards dinner, and several communities were recognized for excellence in a number of development projects, and a couple noteworthy cities, Longmont and Lafayette. And it may be worthwhile for us to kind of look at what they did. I believe one of the two cities, I think it was Lafayette, had kind of this development of multi-use with affordable housing component in it, as well as a piece with an eye towards environmental sustainability. So, great event all around. Jackie Malley was recognized with her many years of service. She won the, I'm going to call it the JVC Award, but it's, I think it's a different acronym, JVH Award. And again, it was a very great, very nice evening, and Mayor Protem was also in attendance there. Along with Councilmember Nowiki, I was also there, along with Mayor Protem, at the Third Annual Adams County Health Forum, caught the tail end of that. And I very much appreciate the fact that our Health Department is really trying to build a relationship with elected officials. This is in the aftermath of the breakup, if you remember, of the tri-county Health Department, and I really learned a great deal. I think I will continue to learn a great deal about health policy by going to these events, so. And then lastly, I would like to just give kudos to the city staff on several fronts. One, Parks and Rec, our lifeguards, obviously, our seasonal workers. Having been a lifeguard myself, I fully appreciate and sympathize with how hard that job is. And I just had the opportunity to really interact with them, both at the Rec Center as well as at Kiwanis, and they're really top-notch young men and women. And I really did enjoy that opportunity to kind of get to meet them and know them. So thank you, Director Peterson, for really bringing on youth and giving them meaningful employment over the summer. And then lastly, I did not know this, but I heard from Tom Carlson that Angelo Giardino retired. And I had a couple of interactions with him, not necessarily an antagonistic relationship, but more of just getting to know him as an individual. And I do know that in his interactions with neighbors, he has been very, very kind and courteous, and I just wanted to say that for the record. He was really a very nice code enforcement gentleman, and I think we will miss him very much. My last is, I would like to make an ask of the days. If there is support, we heard from Ms. Ryan about the fence that went up, and I wonder if it would be worthwhile to ask staff to just kind of do a, how should I say this, a postmortem, or just kind of take a look at how that fence is working or not working, or what the issues are. Director Goff?
Yeah, the only comment to follow up or to add on to that is I would be curious, because part of that was a SEPTED thing, and to see if it has reduced crime or complaints about loitering or things like that as part of this.
Yes, certainly. That was kind of top of mind for me as well. So would there be interest to have staff kind of just do a quick post?
Sure.
Look at it. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not a ton to report out as we have historic preservation and Parks and Rec this week. Just as a reminder, historic preservation really is working this year on collecting those stories, memories, oral history from North Glenn, because we really want to keep those catalogued and just memorialize those in some way, so we have those for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will start off by echoing the gratitude for our crisis response unit and for the Hispanic Heritage Proclamation, of course. I don't know if anybody knew, but one of the co-owners of the Colorado Rockies is the first female and first Latina to become an owner of a major baseball league. So, yeah, she started a company with $2,500 that is now worth over $100 million. So, go Latina women. She's an inspiration. And Hispanics make up about 30% of baseball players, just so you know, professional baseball players. We're good at baseball, and a lot of other things. So thank you for that, and all of the wonderful things that Councilmember Hare Mio said. I absolutely agree, and it was an honor to serve with you on that inaugural committee. Very important stuff. Moving on, a lot of this was already mentioned, and my name was mentioned, so I'll just say, yes, I attended that. The Dr. Cog Awards Event was wonderful. As Councilmember Condo said, there were some really interesting projects, and that sustainability piece in Lafayette, I'll have to say, is like a fully electric subdivision, which was really interesting, you know, looking at what we're doing here in this building. I thought that was really cool, so I'm glad you mentioned that. I also attended the ECPAC breakfast, which is the early childhood breakfast, and I believe we had a forum here a couple of nights before that. I missed that, but I did attend the breakfast. And as I was saying earlier, you know, it was very, there's a lot of doom and gloom happening right now, and there was a lot of eye-opening information, things like, in Adams County alone, this was an actual very horrific statistic. Infant mortality is up like 45% in the last year, and that is just heartbreaking. We can do better. We can absolutely do better. Adams County is one of the most expensive for childcare, at about $22,000 a child. Can you imagine? You have two children, you're out almost $50,000 a year. So there was a lot of conversation around that and the lack of good childcare providers because they get paid dirt, and they're responsible for taking care of our children. So we've got a lot to fix, and I know our city hosted this ECPAC, I can't remember when it was, because I missed that one. So I know we're involved, and we're concerned, and we're hearing everything that's going on. And that kind of dovetailed into the Health Department forum, because a lot of the conversations also revolved around childhood, early childhood, behavioral health, and potentially up to 170% increase in health insurance in the next few years because of HR1, as well as a whole host of other things because of that bill. So just things for us to, you know, keep an eye on and keep doing what we're doing, and I'm very proud to be a part of that right now. And then, last but not least, we had our NERA strategic planning, which was, bless you, which was wonderful. Director Moding led that, and some of the things we discussed, we reviewed our strategic plan and how it relates to urban renewal and economic development. We had an update on the 104th Area Plan with Kim Lee Horn, giving us an update on the corridor, 104th Avenue Corridor, the North Glenn Comprehensive Plan. We reviewed guiding principles. And then, of course, we talked about what we consider our priorities, which very much align with, and should align with, our strategic plan. So a lot more to come on that, but I think it's, one of the most important things that we did was kind of align the corridors that we need to focus on, which is where we've all kind of been going. And that's about it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I have nothing tonight, so I'm going to go to City Clerk Small.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have any reports tonight.
Okay. City Manager Guyer?
Two items for you this evening, Mayor and Council. The first is a reminder that the Hidden Gems Employee Recognition Ceremony is on Wednesday of this week. Doors open at 2:30 PM, and the ceremony will be impromptly at 3:00 PM. So if you have not yet RSVP'd to Tamara Dixon, please feel free to do that within the next day or so. We'd love to see you at that event. That will be, the purpose is to highlight all of the wonderful work that our staff does and contributes to. The other piece is that tomorrow and Wednesday, we are conducting Information Technology Director interviews. The next step after this process will be to host a meet and greet with the top two candidates that I select to move forward in the process. So more information to come about on that. And then the last piece, there's three things. I will send Council an email regarding the meeting that the chief and I had with the Sheriff's Office back in August to provide a follow-up on the jail release process that we, Chief May, had reached out to the Sheriff's Office on. So I'll try to get that to you within the next couple of days. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Hoffman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Members of Council, I do not have anything to report this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have one public hearing tonight, CB 2029. Will the clerk please read the title?
A Bill for an Ordnance Amending Article IV of Chapter 13 of the North Glenn Municipal Code Regarding Campaign Finance Complaints in Municipal Elections.
I will now open the public hearing on CB 2029. Comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone who would like to speak, either for or against CB 2029? Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak about CB 2029? You can unmute yourself by pressing star six at this time. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Ordinances on second reading, CB 2029, campaign finance complaints. Is there a motion to approve on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
City Clerk Joanna Small will provide a summary of this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. CB 2029 would authorize the city clerk to refer complaints to the Secretary of State's office if the city clerk or the city clerk's staff had a conflict of interest as permitted by House Bill 24-1283. So if no conflict exists, then the city has a current process, and that existing process would continue to be used. The proposed ordinance also requires that referred complaints use the Secretary of State's form, so that is a change that's noted in the ordinance. It directs the city to cooperate in any investigation conducted by the Secretary of State, and then it also clarifies that the city will have no financial interest in any of the fines collected by the Secretary of State's office for investigations that they conduct. A copy of City Attorney Hoffman's legal memorandum on the matter was also provided to City Council. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance on second reading, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Clerk Small, just a quick question. When you were kind of describing that, it sounds like there is a, the algorithm allows for an option to refer the matter, if you will, to the Secretary of State, especially if there is a conflict of interest, if things at the local level cannot be done without full transparency or that conflict of interest concern. If there was no conflict of interest element to it, could some issues continue to be adjudicated at the local level, at the city clerk level?
Yes, if there was no conflict of interest. And so what happens is, if a campaign finance complaint is submitted to the municipal clerk, and that is a requirement, folks must submit a complaint to the municipal clerk. When a complaint is received, the clerk reviews it to see if there are some basic items included in the complaint, whether it was filed timely, whether it includes alleged violations of campaign finance law, and then whether the complaint provides sufficient facts to establish a legal or a factual basis for the alleged violations. So those three things need to be present first. If after that criteria is met, then the city clerk would consider whether there is a conflict of interest. Now, the House bill deals with actual bias, and then also reasonably perceived bias. So while I believe that I could investigate a complaint fairly and impartially, I also understand that with reasonably perceived bias, that could, that could impact the public's confidence, whether or not the person is actually biased, just that, just the mere appearance that there would be a bias if I were to investigate a complaint that, say, involved a sitting city council member that also happened to be my supervisor. I would also be very comfortable referring those complaints to the Secretary of State's office so that we could take out that, you know, reasonably perceived bias for the benefit of the city.
You know, that's a great thread, because as I was reading, you know, it talks about an investigating officer, so I was wondering, would that be you or somebody in your office generally, or could it be somebody, anybody on city staff could be an investigator?
Yeah, the hearing officer that is referenced in the ordinance, so that is actually part of the city's current process. So if a complaint was received, it met the criteria, there was no conflict of interest. The city clerk also has the option of then referring that complaint to a hearing officer that is appointed by the city council. And then that does also remove the city clerk from that process, and so that could help with that perceived bias as well.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for explaining that. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, thank you very much. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. I will close that vote, and CB 2029 on second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have three resolutions tonight. The first one is CR 85. Will the clerk please read the title?
A Resolution Approving a Personal Services Agreement Between the City of North Glenn and Foster Graham Milstein &amp; Kalisher LLP for the Lobbyist and Legislative Services.
Move for approval.
City Manager Heather Guyer will provide a summary of this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In May, the Legislative Committee provided direction to issue an RFP for lobbyist legislative services moving into the 2026 calendar year. The city did receive four proposals. The committee narrowed those proposals to three firms to be interviewed, and then made the selection recently of Foster Graham Milstein &amp; Kalisher, also referred to as FGMC. So before you this evening is a personal services agreement in a not-to-exceed amount of $50,000 for the first calendar year of the agreement. This funding is available in the 2026 budget. You can see under the budget and time implications that we do have $40,000 budgeted. However, the differential will be available in the general fund budget. And we'll also be closing out the Bodich &amp; Castle contract based on the funding amount that's listed there as well. And we are moving forward with getting them on board pending approval of their contract this evening. That first meeting with this new lobbying team will be on September 22nd. I'm happy to answer any questions, and certainly will defer to any members of the Legislative Committee if you have anything to add about this selection.
Yeah?
I will just say that we, you know, we were very thorough, and this firm is a great firm, and we're excited, I think, for us to be our new lobbyists, considering, you know, times change, and we're moving forward with some things that are pretty important to us this year. So I think they really did great during their interview. They knew a lot about North Glenn in good detail, so I think they're going to represent us very well. That's all I'll say.
All right, seeing no other comments. Thank you very much. Please open the vote.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CR 85 passes unanimously.
CR 86, will the clerk please read the title?
A consideration resolution pursuant to the requirements of Section 16-7-18 of the Municipal Code of the City of North Glenn, Colorado, directing the setting of a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public input on the issue of a proposed trash fee rate increase. Move for approval.
Second.
Deputy City Manager Jason Loveland will provide a summary of this item.
All right, good evening, Mayor and members of council. Again, this is a resolution simply to set the public hearing for September 22nd. But I do want to mention a few things about the proposed increase. In the memorandum, I did provide on page one a chart. This is something that we had talked about on August 18th at a budget meeting, kind of to identify the need for changing the rates, which were last updated in 2017. Quite a bit has changed with inflationary costs, the cost of service for, you know, the landfill dumping fees, the cost of personnel, also the, you know, the cost to replace the vehicles, which is, you know, 42% greater than it was in 2017. So some pretty significant changes. And as you know, we're not a growing and expanding city, so we're not necessarily adding, you know, more customers to provide support to, which is also, we don't have increased revenue to cover those inflationary costs when we leave the, the rates flat at $16 per month for a residential household. On page two of the memo, I did a little bit of a regional benchmark, which we can talk about more on September 22nd. But I wanted to point out the 2025 rates for several different cities that are in the metro area and beyond. And you can see where our current rates of $16 fall in comparison to the surrounding area. So this was the most apples-to-apples comparison of just depicting one, a poly cart for trash and one poly cart for recycling. So those are those numbers. The other municipalities, if you have more than the one, their prices go up. But I wanted to be clear and simple as possible to just show the comparison that most follows what the city provides if we just got one, one recycle. Of course, we don't necessarily just provide one trash and recycle bin, but this is the simplest view of where our rates sit. Anyway, on page three, this is the resolution, and you can see the chart at the bottom that shows the current rates versus the proposed 2026 rate that will be under consideration. So the top line, the monthly residential basic fee, basic service fee going from $16 to $20. And then some updated language on the bottom two items as well, to simplify the cost to collect a major appliance, simplifying that to be just $65 per appliance. And then the poly cart fees, the, the prices on those, specifically the 96-gallon container, which is mostly, if not all, that we are purchasing and distributing, the cost of those containers is actually $67. So we're just going to simplify that language to current costs, or those are just kind of a at-cost, at-the-city-cost pricing, rather than either being ahead or behind on the distribution of the carts. So that will be, will be considered as changes at September 22nd's meeting. But to today's item, staff recommends approval of CR 86 to set the public hearing for September 22nd. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two questions. One, on the, on the table there on page two, thanks for explaining that. It's truly an apples-to-apples, because I know other cities have tiered rates for multiple trash and whatnot. I, I see that the third line down is private haulers, so would that by any chance be Westminster? I, I think Westminster has, they don't have their own trash collection. People have to contract with, like, waste management and what have you. Is that, is that kind of?
So it's a variety of pri, of private haulers throughout the region. And some of these are through private haulers. Very few of these, Thornton, actually collects their own. But a lot of these have contracts through third parties that are negotiated and established through the city, just representing, I have the list not in front of me, of who actually is doing the service for these entities, and I can provide that at the next meeting.
Gotcha. And then just a small net, and maybe that's for Director Borges, but so on, on page three, it says major appliances. And I, I just recall from my trash ride-along that the city does not take refrigerators. Is that correct? Or will they, will they take refrigerators, freezers? Okay, gotcha. I, I will tell you, I learned a lot on my ride-along. I wish I would have known that. When I replaced my water heater, I would not have had to pay somebody $50 to take it. I would have called the city. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So my questions on this are around communication. So when we look at this information, there's, we're at a decision point, right? My fear is that the public hearing is going to be like tonight's public hearing, which will, will be empty, and then we'll move forward on this, and we'll have a public outcry after the fact. Because even though it seems like $4 is not that big of a deal, everything else is going up. It's just one more thing, and it's going to have an impact. It's going to be noticed, it's going to be felt, we're going to hear about it. So how can we get in front of communication in almost a, a better way than how we do a typical public hearing? How can we get it out there on social media? How can we make sure it's in the connection ahead of time before the final vote? Because I think it's...
The texting we do?
Perhaps. I mean, I just, that's a concern I have. I just think it's, it's going to come around after the fact, because communication is, is hard.
Yeah. So, great feedback. I think that from a connection perspective, obviously, if we have a 22nd, we missed that opportunity. I think that we can put it out on social media and provide other outreach to connect. Setting the public hearing on the 22nd was really designed to match the timing of the budget, to then insert the rate increase into the budget for 2026. It doesn't have to happen that way. We could delay the public hearing on this, exclude, keep it excluded from the budget, and pass it at a later date where we've had an opportunity to put, to put that in the, in the connection. I think that's probably our best way to connect with folks.
Mm-hmm.
Happy to take other thoughts on that, but I think that that probably is. And so we could do that, if that is something that council desires. So part of it is just the alignment.
Yeah, that's one option. Is, like, putting it in the water bill? That's, I mean, like a flyer. I don't know when those go out, if that's already been passed, if we can do both. I just think it's super important.
Okay. We could put a note in the water bill to announce that they were having a public hearing. They go out in four cycles, so that takes a month to get to everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
So that would be, so all things that can happen. It would just push that back, the, the vote or the public hearing on that. But those are things that we could do.
Okay. Are there other council members that share that concern, or is it just me?
Just about a concern.
Are we okay? So I know it does get us off schedule with the budget, but I think that's probably our best choice of moving forward. Please, and thank you.
So to recap...
About to say no.
We'll push out the public hearing date. We will share information on our social media channels and include it in the next connection. Well, it would be the October connection, correct, Diana? Because we've missed, yeah, I'm trying to, it's September, October, right?
Okay, so we can do that. And additionally, in a water bill, or no?
I will double-check to see. We have, we have an opportunity to put language, we put different notes in there from time to time.
Uh-huh.
I'll just make sure that that happens.
Okay.
It can be a very simple message, I think, but we can do, we can work on that. I believe that that can happen, and I will identify when the cycle is.
Yeah.
Where it would get to everyone, and then make sure, we would have to post the public hearing for a date that's later than that.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that there might be questions on procedurally, if we don't select this date, if, what do we need to do exactly? I'm not sure.
I'll chime in. So Section 1 of the resolution states that the city clerk is directed to set a public hearing on a specific date.
Okay.
So I would ask for either a motion to amend the resolution or a friendly amendment, if the, the mover and the seconder agree, to pick a specific date that would allow us to, to post the public hearing at that time, and then also allow staff to accomplish all of the communications.
So we need to select a date right now in order to amend this? So does the city manager have a recommendation? I mean, I'm looking at the calendar.
November 10th. That would provide a whole month notice, and we'd likely hit the four cycles with the utility bills if we do that.
Tell me more about that, because I get a monthly bill. What does it mean, four cycles?
Oh, so we have around 10,000 customers, and so we bill about 2,500 per week. So we do the meter reading and then bill. So we bill every single week about 2,500 customers per.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, so that's the cycles. You're not on four cycles.
Yeah, I was like, I just get one, so I don't know what you're talking about. Oh, got it.
So, yeah, sorry.
It wouldn't, like, the 3rd or the 27th wouldn't work if we did it now? Because of, I mean, I feel like the water bill cycles could start sooner than the connection. And if the connection is mailed out, isn't it usually the week of the 6th or 13th?
We try to get the connection notified the first of the month. The connection's not a problem, and the filter's not a problem. The water bill, if you want to insert a flyer, I'm not sure if everybody, if there's going to be a text on the water bill, it'll be closed, but you probably can't, because, you know, we have to make sure and get it the next one, and then the next four. That's basically progress. So if you don't care about the water bill for sure, the others have to be connected.
We can schedule a special meeting on November 3rd. Right now, it's slated for a, a study session, but the November 10th date would provide for additional time.
I mean, I'm counting weeks. I don't know why the 27th doesn't work. I mean, because you're saying six weeks, we're only at September 8th if we make this decision today.
If council directs that, we can do that as well.
I'm just trying to do the math.
We're, we're being cautious.
So if the water bill needs about six weeks, how much lead time do they need to get the first water bill out?
That, that I don't know, and I don't know what the current message is that's going out right now.
There's going to be a public hearing about an increase.
Yeah, I need to check and...
Oh, okay.
Currently, I don't know what message is being sent in the water bills.
Oh, got it.
As in, like, if you got one about, hey, come to do whatever, and then some folks won't get that, because we're, like, changing the message.
Oh, because we're messing with them.
So I think that that's the, the balance of perfecting the timing as we stand here right now.
Okay.
So...
Well, how about if we go with November 3rd? Does that work mathematically? Maybe?
I don't know. I'm deferring if we, that's a study session night and a pub...
The 27th?
So...
How about we do this? Tomorrow, we'll verify.
We need to date in the resolution.
I know. So let me just talk through this. Go ahead and put it for November 3rd, but then if it doesn't work, we can follow up and we'll... Otherwise, November 10th is the safest, is what we're suggesting.
Well, I just think it's, that's six weeks after the connection is mailed. That's like a huge delay. So then you would, might as well put it in the November connection. So maybe we scrap the water bill thing? I don't know. I just want to get it out. I mean, Councilmember Goff mentioned the texting platform. Can we use that? And then we'll just get rid of the, the water bill thing and then do it the 6th or 13th? I don't know which. I don't have that open. I just have my calendar. The 13th or 20th, which one is a regular meeting?
October 13th is a regular meeting. October 20th is a study session that's pretty full right now with an executive session, but certainly that meeting could be utilized as well. Each of those communication platforms reach people differently. So it really depends on, we know connection is a great communication platform. The texting platform is based on subscriber base, utility billing, also a great platform based on feedback that we've received in the past. So I think if the intent is to reach as many of our residents as possible, I would be conservative with the timing, meaning more time. So either October 27th or November 3rd.
Okay, well, I'm going to propose the 27th. Okay, who would like to amend the motion?
Second.
Now someone needs to actually amend it. No, I'm so sorry. Am I allowed to amend it?
It would ideally be the maker and the second, whoever made the original motion. It's probably the easiest, because then it's a friendly amendment.
Fantastic. Who made the original?
This is me.
I don't know. All right.
I move to amend this resolution, to move the...
You don't even have to make a motion. You can just indicate that as the maker of the motion, you'd want to make a revision to change the date of September 22nd, 2025, to October 22nd, 2025, uh, October 27th, I'm sorry, 2025.
Okay, so as the maker of the motion, I would like to amend it to move the date from September 22nd, public hearing, to October 27th.
And who seconded it?
Councilmember Condo seconded the motion.
Just do it again.
Okay, I, I second the friendly amendment to the motion.
Excellent. Okay, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CR 86, as amended, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay, CR 87, will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution in support of the Environmental Protection Agency's 2009 endangerment finding that greenhouse gases endanger public health and welfare.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, our Director of Planning and Development, Brooks Boboda, is here to provide a summary of this item. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. On August 1st, the EPA proposed to rescind a rule that would effectively eliminate all emission standards for, for vehicles. They have a comment period that closes on September 22nd. At the August 25th meeting, the Legislative Policy Committee held a meeting, and staff presented options on how to address this. And so what you have before you is a resolution that effectively is in response to this proposed rule change, and that the Legislative Committee recommended to bring this to council, where in council then directed to bring back this resolution. So I'm here tonight to... So I'm here tonight to present this and recommend approval on the staff side and happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Councilmember Goff?
Thank you. So I just, is this going to be sent anyone or is it just?
So this is the, the attached exhibit to the resolution is a, is a letter that the mayor would sign that would then go to the EPA. And as part of this process, the EPA has to respond to every one of these comment letters.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted to clarify.
Any other questions or comments? No, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote and CR 87 passes with one no vote cast by Councilmember Walker.
Okay, moving on to the discussion items. Citywide communications and marketing assessment. City Manager Heather Geier will present this item.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So this evening I am advancing a recommendation to issue a request for proposal or RFP to conduct a, to solicit a firm, a public relations marketing firm, to conduct a citywide communications and marketing assessment. I'm advancing this request based on ongoing feedback that I've received in terms of observations that we could do better when it comes to our citywide communications and marketing. I think this exercise is also intended to provide a third party outside perspective on not only what we could do better, but also how can we prepare ourselves for the next five plus years? So short term and long term perspective. We've made great strides in terms of what we provide from a comms and marketing perspective over the last several years. And we've done different reorganization efforts. But it is a time of day when I do know that other cities similar in size as well as larger cities are also embarking on similar work. So I think this is an important step to take in order to move the needle with how we market ourselves. We do a lot communications wise from a public information perspective, but we have not taken on the effort to really take a step back, think about who are we? What messages do we want to send? Develop those messages. We have a brand identity when it comes to our marketing logo. We don't necessarily have any taglines or any specific messaging that comes along with our logo. And so that's also one example of a key deliverable that could come out of this work amongst other things. So I have drafted a scope of services which I've shared with our Director of Communications and she, Diana Wilson, she provided input. My recommendation is that I serve as the project manager. She'll assist me with this effort. The big piece though, that I need council feedback on this evening is I am recommending that we organize a council subcommittee to serve in an advisory role capacity. And I've outlined a scope of what that advisory role would look like in the second attachment with this memorandum. So happy to hear any feedback that you might have on, on that piece. If council supports issuance of an RFP, I would go ahead and get this issued by mid-September. And then also work on getting the subcommittee formed. Council does have the option if you want to wait until after the election, I can go ahead and move forward the subcommittee process and then bring the subcommittee in towards the initial, I'll shift the timing to where the committee would be involved in review of proposals. And that step in bringing forward a recommendation to city council post-election. So we have some opportunity to be flexible there, but I'm happy to hear any feedback and respond to questions.
Councilmember Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have a couple. The first is I didn't know. I mean, maybe this is too much into the weeds at this point. But I know there's like a wide variety of media to contact people and we have residents of all types. But I just don't want seniors to get left out of this who are still dependent on paper. I'm not one of them, but there are, they are though, are, they are out there. People with landlines and smartphones, that kind of thing. So I, you know, just make a footnote somewhere. And then I, I do think unless there are enough people who aren't going, who aren't up for reelection interested, that it probably would be better to wait till for after the election. I'm interested in being on this committee, but I'm not sure how, how to determine that tonight.
Councilmember Nowiki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm curious, can you explain a little bit the idea behind the subcommittee? Like essentially why have a subcommittee for something like this?
The reason I'm advancing the idea of a subcommittee is as policymakers, council plays an important role. You think about the, the role you play in strategic planning and setting that high level vision and the strategic priorities for the city. Thinking about multiple strategic priorities included in the strategic plan. They touch communications and marketing. In addition to the feedback that I receive from city council, positive and constructive criticism related to our current communications efforts. I think it's important to have your feedback if you want to step forward and, and serve on the subcommittee. Now, council as a whole will be involved in this effort through updates, regular updates, and then overall hearing a presentation about what's recommended and then helping move forward anything that's recommended by the consulting firm. But I think, you know, when you think about where we're at as a city, all of the great work that we've done up to this point, this is really intended to be a catalytic exercise to figure out where do we need to go moving forward. Right now, we have a decentralized approach to communications and marketing. And so there's a lot happening in different departments of the city. And so think of this, I mean, it truly is an assessment. It's a way to step back, have someone else come in and say, this is what you do well. This is what you could do better. There's opportunity, untapped opportunity here that you could capture and utilize. And I think it'd be a valuable exercise for council involvement. If council tonight, you say, no, you know what? Go ahead and issue the RFP. Go ahead and do the work, staff. We can go about it that way too. But this, my recommendation is based on the observations and the feedback that I've received and certainly conversation of late with city council through my review process. So I think it'll be a valuable exercise for all of us.
Okay. That's all.
Councilmember condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So certainly when it comes to the design or the the scope of work for the vendor, I definitely want to be sure that there is an element that, that guarantees that they're going to be looking at the branding strategy at large and that it's commensurate or consistent with our core values. I don't know if I saw that in there. But I, I do think that if we are going to take a moment to step back and think about what our overall branding is as a city, I, I would assume that would be kind of one of the bedrock components of all of that.
Yes.
Okay, great.
A bedrock component, Councilmember condo would be development of a brand strategy. And admittedly, you know, thinking overall, you know, we do do things strategically, but have we taken the step back and really thought about what we're doing as we move into the future and all of the different moving pieces? So development of a brand strategy and then really making sure we think about and, and know the, the, create the positive impact, you know, theater staff, rec staff. You know, those are two areas where they're decentralized in terms of our communications. And so whatever Diana's staff is doing and they're doing, that there's an overall strategy that we're aspiring and targets that we want to meet. Knowing they can be different, yeah, under an overall umbrella.
Great. And then as far as the concept of having a council subcommittee, I, I would be in favor of having that. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is a great next step. I would definitely be in favor of having the subcommittee, subcommittee and/or helping out on it. I think this is what we've asked for as council and it's important that we're representative of our, of the voices and that, that we get some input and, and that feedback is essential to making a quality brand. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will start with a question and then my comments. The question I have in terms of KPIs. What are we currently doing to track KPIs right now and measure success in terms of our communications? Or do we not have that established yet?
We do have some level of KPI. This would be a review of existing KPIs to include recommendations for new KPIs. So again, right now Diana and her staff measure certain KPIs. So number of video productions, number of connection newsletter additions. I think this work would, by example, really open us up to, well, what qualitative KPIs could we add that we don't currently utilize? You know, we have done surveying of participants at special events. And so that's an example, but really looking at communications and marketing citywide. And it, and it's true for the theater, for rec programming. You know, we know what we know and we've done what we've done. And this is really looking at how can we do better? And really challenge ourselves to think broader and, and differently. And so should we be measuring different things? Probably. Doesn't mean what we're doing is wrong currently, but there's probably opportunity to, you know, for improvement.
Great. I mean, I would assume that would be part of what a consultant would do is identify those gaps.
Yes.
And the ways that we can improve tracking those KPIs that are more relevant moving forward with, I guess, strategies that we need for the city. And then I'm 100% in favor of a branding strategy just because I am a business owner and marketing is incredibly important. And I will say like, I, I'll just mention that my brand is known, very well known. People that I don't know know the brand. And I think that's important, you know, when we're thinking about attracting businesses to Northland. What is Northland's brand? Why is it important for a business to, to establish themselves here in Northland, especially when we have so many storefront vacancies? So I'm excited about that part as well. And then I think, you know, I'm hoping that a consultant will look at not only digital marketing, but again, just from my experience as a business owner, strategies, guerrilla marketing is becoming important. Again, more of that face to face communication. And I think that speaks to what Councilmember Goff said in terms of not forgetting a certain part of our population that maybe isn't as connected to digital communication. That's where that face to face is going to be important in our branding. So I would assume that would be a part of somebody who's really good at, you know, putting all of those things together. And then just looking at our previous conversation about the sanitation rate increases. I mean, that's a perfect example right there of how we can improve in communication. And, you know, would hope that something like that in the future would be thought of in advance. Not like, oh, we're going to delay this now because we should have looked at that before. So I think those are kind of those small gaps and we do a good job, I agree, but we can do better, right? Moving forward in the future. And then the last thing that I will say is that I'm also in support of a subcommittee. And with the business and branding experience, I would also like to be interested in that committee as well. So in favor.
Councilmember Nowiki, is your hand up again?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go. Sorry, I didn't mean to say it that way. I just.
It's okay.
That was not the tone I was going for.
I'm pulling a condo, but I'm leaving it up.
I'm so sorry. That was not my intended tone.
No, no, no.
I just didn't want to miss it.
Quite all right.
You had something else to add.
I do, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm a little confused because going back to the first page, the background, it says the subcommittee of city council will be formed and then another committee will be an internal communications and marketing committee will also be formed?
Yes.
Can't we just like do a peanut butter and jelly sandwich and put it all together?
They have two different roles and purposes. Yeah, you wouldn't, I would not want to combine the two. The internal marketing committee would consist of staff. And that was a committee that I was already on track to pull together. Diana and I, and I hit pause on that, having that meeting a week ago in order to have this conversation with council.
Okay.
So that, that committee will consist of key staff members who have roles in this work.
So that's all staff?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the, the council one, for council members, who else will be on the committee? The subcommittee? Like staff wise?
I'll serve as project manager, so not technically a staff member. Diana will assist me, so we'll be staff support to the subcommittee.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Councilmember condo?
I think I just need to drop my hand.
Oh, see? See? I knew I was going to make a mistake. Apologies. So so I'm still confused about the two committees as well. So thank you, Councilmember Nowiki, because I had that same question. And I'm also hearing a lot of interest and so I'm hesitating to limit it to four people. I feel like council members that are interested should be allowed to participate as opposed to arm wrestling for a seat. And then I'm going all the way back to Councilmember Goff. Looking at where we are in the timeline right now. I think it's beneficial to do this after a new council is seated. And that way, and, and I would like more information about this work. I mean, this is a decent summary, but I'm still wondering what the subcommittee of council is going to do? If there's an internal staff committee doing the work? It, those two things I'm not clear on.
Okay. So the subcommittee of council, their scope is outlined in attachment two. So the council subcommittee is setting the tone, building the overall vision, guiding the work. So the internal marketing committee of staff, they're in a support role. They're helping inform the work. They will receive regular updates as well. They're, they're a key stakeholder group, if you will. But council, the council subcommittee would be driving this work. So I don't view them as competing. I view them as complementary roles. And so you know, I could, I'm unclear as to how I can help clarify the role of the subcommittee. I mean, this, this will be a council priority. This is the subcommittee's work. I've outlined the scope of here, all the different pieces. And certainly if there's something that's missing. And I know Councilmember Burns is not here this evening and we can have a second conversation about this. If we need to do that. The, the scope can be amended. It's specific yet broad enough to solicit proposals from the market, from a variety of firms. But ultimately, when a firm is selected, you have an agreed upon scope. So I view this work as the council subcommittee if it's for, or if you want it to be done differently and you don't want a subcommittee, you want this to be done with council. you want this to be done with council as a whole, we can rethink that. And it would really be that, think of it like a sub-area planning project. I serve as the project manager, I'll be bringing regular updates about this work to council as a whole, so certain touchpoints.
I think that might be why I'm stuck, it feels like a full council process.
And that's okay.
Because I did see attachment two, and I see the roles, but I'm just trying to figure, it feels like a full council process. So trying to understand, I just don't want there to be four council members, it's just adding another communication step where those four need to communicate with us or need to get input from the rest of us to take forward. I just, it feels like a disconnect, I don't know how everyone else is feeling about that. Like a full council process feels more streamlined, I think is the word I'm looking for.
So that would be like a study session, little mini-study sessions along the way?
Correct. If that makes sense?
Everybody's interested.
Yeah, I think so, too. Yeah, well, then Adam's going to skip those meetings.
You don't have to be there.
Don't get me wrong, I speak for it.
Yes.
No, 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 I know, well, and if it was an additional meeting, but it feels like it's the work. And I just, I'm really concerned about the... I don't know, just adding another layer of communication back and forth in order to take something... I'm still not picturing this, right? Like if there's, you as the project manager and you have a staff committee, and then you're talking to a subcommittee, and then there's council, I don't, it just feels disjointed to me, so...
Yeah, the ordering that you just described is completely not the ordering in my mind.
Right.
But I didn't do a flow chart for you.
Yeah.
So it's the council, the, think of it, the council subcommittee, I'm the project manager out on the side with Diana. And the staff committee is informing the work of the subcommittee at different points. I mean, the consultant will want to talk with the individuals responsible who have the expertise in the respective areas. So think about it that way. But it was a different approach. We can do this as a council as a whole, just like a sub-area planning process and our other approaches, so that's fine, too.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
And it sounds like everyone's on board, almost. Okay.
Okay, thumbs up, then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, rounding up, with public invited to be heard, this is an opportunity for public comment, statements are limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments must be related to an item previously addressed by council during the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to council at this time? A resident cab member, maybe? Thoughts? No? Nice to see you. Okay. Councilmember Nowicki, do you want another shot? Just wanted to let you know you had the floor if you needed it. Okay, there being no further business, we are adjourned.